Good evening. I'd like to call the planning board meeting of October 18th to order. And the first thing I'd like to do with this large group is make sure everyone understands the rules. Anyone that needs to speak on an article is allowed to do so, but not from your seat. You must be recognized, come up, identify yourself, and then you're allowed to speak there and go back. And all communication needs to be through the board or basically directed at me. You can't be asking questions of other people, what did he say? All the questions have to come this way. Identify yourself and step up there. We'll try-- obviously, it's a big crowd. You all here to say something will be ready to listen, but I just want to make sure you know the rules. And when you're finished, you have to remember, there's other people that are ready to go right behind you, so please just leave the room and keep going and don't talk, because the door has to stay open for open meeting. And sometimes we have people go out, it takes 10 minutes, and everyone has to wait, because we get a lot of chatter. So just remember, there's other people here that are after you, and they would like to have the same timeframe that you had, so just keep that in mind.
Cell phones.
Oh, yeah. Make sure your cell phones are all silenced. We just did ours. And we're ready to roll.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. The first thing on our agenda tonight is the minutes from October 4th and October 11th. Have anyone had time to review them?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of minutes of October 4th and the approval of minutes of October 11th with the minor correction by Ms. Kefoot.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The next item on the agenda is approval not required. Required, any plans? We have a new plan that just came in today, and I want to ask, have all the members had a chance to take a look at it?
No.
Could you take a look at it? It's A and R.
Is there going to be a presentation?
We don't need one. We can't if you-- is the applicant here to make a presentation?
So I would ask the chair to fill me, if it's more expedient.
It is. Approval not required.
Yep.
Basically means it--
I know what it means.
Okay, you know what it means, and it's there.
So what's--
They are making two lots into one.
Two lots into one.
And that's generally approval not required. So they don't have-- there doesn't-- you just ask for our permission, and we endorse it, and they move forward, and it's just a change.
They have the adequate frontage, let's see. So, yeah, okay.
I don't even think frontage matters. They just want to put two lots together. They can put two lots together. When we approve this, it has no standing on building permits or anything about it. We're just saying, yep, you own two lots, and you want to make them one. That's okay. Period.
I move that we endorse the Peterson Realty Trust approval-not-required plan to combine lots 45 and 46 into Lot 46A without regard to-- without regard to a determination that the lots comply with zoning regulations, and it shouldn't be construed as an approval that the lots are entitled to a building permit as combined.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Nickerson Street LLC, plan review for construction of two duplex lots, duplex residential condominiums located on East Valmath Highway. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at this plan? Yep? Okay. For the applicant, we have John Doyle.
Good evening. My name's John Doyle, and I helped prepare this plan for Nixon Street LLC, the principal of which is Dan McLean, who's sitting in the front row down here. Dan, his parents live across the street, he was raised across the street from this site. His father has a photography studio there, and he lives actually out on Timothy Bourne Road, just across the street, with his wife and children. This property is located at the easterly corner of Central Ave at Route 28 or East Valmath Highway. The last time it was before you was about three years ago, and I'm not used to this format, so I'm going to try to make the best of it. Apparently, you had a problem with the PDF at the prior meeting, so let me go on. This property at the corner is about 33,500 square feet in total. There is a rectangle within the lot that is a-- in a different zone than the perimeter of it. So that rectangle is about there. I've put lines on it, and it's labeled. So this area within here would be the B3 district, and this on the outside perimeter would be AGB or Agricultural B District. So the area that's within the B3 is about 10,800 square feet, so the remaining is about 22,600 square feet in AGB. The reason we're here quickly is that because we're dealing with the B3, there are certain things that are allowed. As of right in the B3, there are others that are allowed, and a special permit, we're here because of the multifamilies, there's a special permit in that area. And because of that, we will be in front of the zoning board soon, beginning of this next coming month, and we're here before you because, A, we've tripped the number of parking spaces that kick us into the site plan review. And I think you are also, B, acting as a design review committee too. So to touch on these coverages before I go up and explain this thing, just so I get them down. The existing lot coverage is just a common driveway that runs through the property, just here. Other than that, there is no coverage on the lot, no buildings, no paving, no parking. That amounts to 1,903 square feet, or 5.68% of the lot. The proposed structures, that is the buildings, will be at 3616 square feet, which is 10.8%, which is well below what is allowed in this district, the AGB or the B3. The B3, I'm glad you were up to 35% and 20% in the AGB. The parking, paving, and structures total of what you see proposed will be about 12,271 square feet, amounting to 36% of the lot covered by the parking, paving, and structures, which is also below the limit of zoning. So it's on the corner of Central Ave and East Valmath Highway, and what we propose to do is come to this common driveway that serves four lots, including this lot. That plan was put on record quite a few years ago. On two of the other lots, there are currently dwellings. There's a potential for a third dwelling to go down the end of the common driveway. This rectangle was shown on that plan as B3, and it goes back to a plan in 1971 that was actually drawn by my father when we subdivided 94 lots here. So that zone has been there since 1971, and I know it's like 55 years now that it's been there. What we need to do to get more access in here is to widen this common driveway, this paved driveway, right in this area, and I'm showing it here. We will widen it to the extent that we can with the limitation of a pole that sits here. So we'll add a strip of paving in here. After we're in about 50 feet to 60 feet, turn left and make a 20-foot way into the parking area that will serve the two multifamily dwellings, that is, two duplexes of two bedrooms each. I'm describing one here, and the other one is up in this area. The parking requirement for those units is two spaces per unit, which amounts to eight spaces. I have, on all versions of this plan, shown nine. Recently, I took the ninth, per suggestions of the engineering department, and made it handicap accessible dimensions, and also labeled it as a guest parking lot, which was another suggestion of theirs. We did, on an earlier plan, in this area right here, it was not an officially filed plan, but I know that neighbors that did get a look at it, show a garage, and then we showed even a larger garage. That has been taken off the plan, that has removed. So the version you see here, and the neighbors, I know, are upset about that, is the version that we're presenting, and there is no garage. The drainage in the lot has all been approved by engineering department. In the latest letter, they did ask that we-- this little strip in here would drain out to the road, and they don't want us pulling out in the road. From here, it all drains this way, and here it all drains into those areas in there, but there are catch basins and reaching areas. The engineering department recently asked me to create a depression here so that this stuff we're going to cast this way when we pave this strip will go into that depression and not into the public way. So the plan also shows the sewage layouts of where the SASs are going to go and setbacks that are required from them to the drainage structures. We did file a landscaping plan. I have it here. We haven't heard anything adverse about it, but we did add something along the way as a result of a conversation I had with the neighbors as well over in this area. Like I say, there are two houses beyond this. Those people are worried about the screening in that area. There is a fence there, and there are some-- I think there are hydrangeas there, but we're going to add 13 Leyland cypresses down that line, going to get nice and high.
Excuse me. Do you have a landscaping plan we can see while you talk about this?
Yeah, sure.
Do you have it in a PDF format?
I don't think we do, dude.
You've been notified in the past that that's what we need. Let's go.
That's it.
You've had ample notice on this a couple times, but you should have brought at least--
But I just got it in my hand tonight, so.
The reason why we ask this is so the people at home can see these things, and we can see them. Do we have it here?
Yes, you do. Yes. The elevations, the landscape design around the doors.
So this area here that's in green around here is existing vegetation, and we're going to revolve that. Most of it is bocas and maples. There are a few oaks in there. We're going to plant these trees along the driveway. These are the screenings we plan to plant in here. These is the cypresses, and the rest that's going to go into grass out here, they're going to do some moundings where there are spaces. Route 28, try to keep the screens.
Excuse me. The screen is a microphone.
Sure.
If everybody can hear.
Out here, they plan to put some moundings, as you can see, where if there are openings to 28, they'll get filled in with the moundings as well as the plantings on the moundings. I know that they've had this plan for a while. I hope that they can see it on television. May I continue?
Yeah, thank you. Keep going.
So there was a comment from the town DPW that they would-- that we disagree with, that they would like us to extend this sidewalk, which goes across 28, turns a corner, extend the sidewalk down to here. We disagree with it because this sidewalk out in the front of 28 goes all the way to Seaco Shores, and the crosswalk is here, and when you cross over, there's a sidewalk on this west side of the road that goes 8,000 feet down to Menard Road and at the ocean. We really don't think that we should be made to build this, because there's no sidewalk on that side of the road the entire length of the road. There are a couple of telephone poles in the way, and we actually fear that some of the kids coming from Central Ave, from Seaco Shores or Antler Shores or Ashley Meadows coming up here to usually go to the store across the street at Kenyon's, might come down across where there is no crosswalk. The most reasonable place for them to do is cross up here where there is a legal crosswalk and they're protected. So we don't think that we should be made to extend this down to here. Now, the other lots that are on the common drive also have frontage on Route 28, East Valmath Highway, so they have access to drive the sidewalk out front. In fact, their water and their electric comes in off 28. So another issue that came up with the neighbors was that the-- about the snow plowing, and we're certainly-- we can't often plow them out every time there's a storm. I know that the people in engineering said they've been approaching them, trying to get them to plow it as if it was a Valmath street, and it isn't, so they haven't. So what we can say is that we intend to plow this and plow, when we go by the entry, plow over into here so that we don't leave the rest of the snow in the road for them to deal with. But it would certainly help them, I would think, in getting that amount of it plowed. Subsequently, because when you opened the first hearing, you had problems with the PDF, and I wasn't here, and Mike and Dan were here, Steve and Dan were here. They thought that when I worked on that, I should also make some changes that were-- I got a request for the day before your hearing. I gave you a letter indicating those changes. I'm going to go quickly through them again. The ninth space they suggested should be of handicap accessible dimensions and labeled a guest space. Because I did that, I had to move one of the post lamps in the road, in the parking lot edge. There was a suggestion that the fronts or the facades of those buildings, those duplexes, looked a little too boxy, so we might want to add something to break it up a little bit, and he has offered to change that. So where the entries are, we've got some 3'6-- 3'8 by 12 bump outs in the front, which will be hip roof bump outs to break up that. I've added those to my plan, my site plan. Actually, I had to change both of the lot coverages to account for that, so that the prior plan you had did not show the same lot coverage as I'm showing now, because the bump outs are more structural coverage, and making the ninth space more handicap accessible added paving. These are the most current ones, and they're reflected in the letter and on this plan.
Do you have a plan you could put up so people can see it at home and people here? But right now, we're the only ones can see what you're talking about.
Right now. So this is the same plan that's on the wall.
You were talking about the elevations. Do you have those?
It's on the landscape.
There it is. Want to move this up a bit for me before I show you these?
Yeah, we've seen that. The elevations, what you were just talking about, that's what I asked you about.
Oh, that's a question. So we're talking about this little bump out right here with the hip roof that extends over the entries of both doors of the units. Also, on that list that I got the day before our last meeting, the engineering department asked for me to delineate on the plan the site distances in clear areas per the engineering department's chart that they gave me to design for. Those have been entered. So those are, from this spot, from this point of observation, heading south, the required distance, site distance, this will be the area you need to clearing. As out there, this is only brush, that we need to clear. It's even smaller going this way from the observation port, looking north up to the corner where people enter that way at the speed limit that's in effect at that point At this entry, I think I've already said this, but the other thing that was in your letters, that at this entry, for this little strip of paving, they've asked us to add this depression via the engineering department, so that it'll pick up this runoff from just that little strip there. Actually, right up in here, right here, if you're out there, there's a mark I made in the road with an arrow going this way and going that way, and it shows you where it begins to pitch the other way, happened to be out there. Okay, and the last thing was that I added in that letter is that we added a footpath. Right in here, we added a footpath that runs from the parking lot right out to where the crosswalk is, at the sidewalk. The painted crosswalk is here, and this is the existing sidewalk, so that people from our units could get out there and use the crosswalk. That's where we began to differ with them, because we really didn't think that it should be extended to the south, the sidewalk, with 8,000 square-- of 8,000 linear feet of it on the west side going all the way to the ocean. We really don't think we should start to bring it south when there is no crosswalk and the crosswalk is up at the corner. He's obviously trying to keep these units affordable, and it's not going to make it any more affordable by having to build a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. So I'm here with Dan and Steve McKenzie, who's handled the administrative end of this, and I'm open for questions, and hopefully I can help you answer them.
Everyone, could you list for us the list of waivers you're asking us to grant you?
Can we do that tonight, Steve?
It's not a subdivision, Mr. Chairman, this is a plan review.
Okay.
So there's no list of waivers.
I think the one that may be a little bit inverted is that we, when I was reading this back a couple months ago, I think you might ask for the buildings to be out this way. And I've stayed out here with my tribe bud for hours and hours, and it's just so loud, you can't do that to people. These bedrooms belong back in here, back in here. Parking lot here. There are going to be lights in the parking lot, there are going to be headlights coming in at night, people from shopping and stuff in there. We have the buildings here, it insulates that parking lot and that noise in the street from these people that live over here and these people that live here. And I think that's a good one. If you go over to Kenyon's across the street, it's the same situation, buildings back here, all the parking spaces. If that's a really good--
Any questions from any other board members? Yes?
So, Mr. Doyle, looking at the landscape plan, I see, to piggyback on your last comment with regard to the light posts, I see only one. Is that the intention?
There are four of the light posts shown on the plan. There's one here, one here, one here, and there was one over here, but when I widened that space to make it handicap accessible, I had to move it to here, which doesn't harm anything, because it's close to the building, and people are walking to the walkways to the steps.
Okay, I see it now. I was looking on the landscape--
They're not shown on the landscape plan. You've got to go to the other plan.
Right. Piggybacking on your sidewalk waiver, the footpath is a good accommodation, but what's it going to be comprised of? I mean, my concern would be if it's just going to be wood chips or something like that, that doesn't serve the same purpose during the wintertime. You need, I mean, unless you're going to shovel wood chips.
I could certainly talk to Dan about going to something a little more hardened.
So right now, the plan is--
The plan is for it to be wood chips, yes.
You had referenced the engineering referral quite often. Could you explain and hopefully provide, the engineering department recommended that the applicant provide a figure that shows an SU vehicle can enter and exit the site for emergency vehicle purposes. Do you have a--
We're obviously driving trucks like that in and out there all the time, but when I saw that, I went to Mel Trot, the lieutenant in charge of fire safety, and he said, I read that to him, that didn't come from him, and he said that his referral said, he's already in here and has no issues, and that's the way he feels.
Okay. Lastly, the referral from the engineering department, it says, "While not required, we recommend considering additional parking spaces." It's a great-- It's a great improvement, the handicap parking and converting to guest when it's not used is a... But that's only one. Is there a potential, or was there consideration given to, you know, more? Because I would assume the occupants of the buildings would entertain more guests than just one between four units.
Yeah, well, the zoning calls for two per unit.
Right.
You know, I don't know if every household has two, especially one with two bedrooms, but that's what the zoning requires. We're in excess of the zoning, and we did not need to have a handicap space, we're offering it because of... So, you know, at some point, you gotta be an individual and not just be a community, a town, you know, with laws. It's, I think that people would find a place to park if they had to.
So in that vein, will the lead in to the parking area, will that be potentially used as overflow parking?
Well, it won't be to the left, because we've tried to assure the town that we're going to keep those maples and locusts in place. But people can be pretty creative about finding themselves a space.
I'm just concerned about if that is an access area, especially concerning emergency vehicles, if it's clogged by parked overflow parking. It's not a good plan.
Well, I mean, there is space in here, but I don't know if people down the road really wants parking.
Oh, there is. Is it depicted?
It's not indicated, but there's space.
Okay. Will it have any sort of signage saying that this is where you're supposed to park, not on the access road?
I don't think we're, I don't think we're proposing any signs to that, the point where we're gonna restrict people like that. The engineering department did, while on the subject, indicate that they'd like to have a sign posted out at the entrance, just off the layout line, probably to the right, indicating all of the addresses down there. The other people, even though they have frontage off their common driveway, their addresses are like eight and 10 Central Avenue, so I'm assuming we'd be two, four, six, or eight. So we'd show them all, so that the fire safety could get down there and not hurt anyone.
So you're amenable to that recommendation?
I don't know.
The recommendation of the signage?
Yeah, we're amenable to that. In fact, we'd probably put one more indicating to go left in here to these addresses, so that they don't go down and bother these people. Doesn't take much of a sign to do that, just a note.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
I'd like the board members to focus where I wanna complete the design review, make sure if you have any questions about the design, you bring them up now.
Jim?
Yes, Pat?
You have the handicap parking there, and that's a good thing. Are any of the units going to be handicap accessible? Because if you've gotta navigate two or three steps to get into the building...
I'm gonna refer that to Dan, if you don't mind. Dan, do you have an answer to that? You need to come up and identify yourself.
I'm Dan McCrone. Currently, we don't have it designed as handicap accessible units. We have, we're open-minded to if it turns into a custom application, if we go that route, but at this point, we're building them as non-handicap accessible.
Yes, Jeff?
If I understand it correctly, these are condominiums, so they'll have a condominium association, and if one of your buyers needs a handicap unit, you'd be able to address that at that time?
That certainly sounds right to me. I don't know about the condominium one, I know we talked about it.
Yeah, if it goes to, if I had a client that came and wanted that, then we would be apt to accommodate, if need be, at an adequate cost, obviously.
And as a condominium association, if they need more parking or wanna use parking from the grassed areas, that would be their decision?
Yeah, that would be a part of the association, they would have to agree upon that, especially if they were gonna dedicate overflow.
Okay, thank you.
I have a concern, I just wanna mention to the board, I've, you know, we talk about site plan and that we're not designing for just this year, that we're looking for the future. I don't know how a blind person could get out of this place without a sidewalk to get over to Kenyans, or to get up to the street to catch a bus. I just, we put sidewalks in, I guess they're in subdivisions, but I'll just bring that up and see what you guys think when it comes time to condition it. Anybody else?
I do, just, could you explain again for clarification, the, is there, there's going to be a mound or a berm that's adjacent to 228 for noise abatement? Is that correct?
When I was presenting the landscape plans tonight, they indicated to me that there were gonna be some mowing out in the front, particularly where gaps showed up. So if you have to put a sewage tank in somewhere, you need to cut an oak tree, or, you know what I mean, that'd be the place to do that, fill it back in.
Okay, and then so...
For vista as well as sound purposes.
So in lieu of a berm, there's going to be, I see on the landscape plan, there's gonna be undergrowth.
Grass.
Under, existing woodland under, oh, 20 rhododendrons to fill in the existing woodland undergrowth. Okay, that's good.
Anybody else? Anyone from the public like to comment on this? Okay.
Then I'll leave with the design team, and we'll schedule a decision here at your next available meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Next item on the agenda is Sandlin Family Trust Definitive Plan to Subdivide Existing Single Lot Into Eight Lots Located At 209 Maravista Avenue. Notices.
Mr. Chairman, three notices were published on September 30th, October 7th, and October 14, 2016. Thirty-one of voters were notified by certified mail return receipt on October 7, 2016.
Let's take a minute. We have done a site visit on this, remember? Been out here. Okay, for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Fox. As you know, I'm an honored bailiff attorney. Let me just get Tom Bunker in. Okay, just a little bit of history regarding this project. Well, this tract, seven acres, surrounded by Cypress Street and Cedar Street and Maravista, I thought it'd be interesting for you to know that when this proposed subdivision of eight lots, it would be all built out. Including the houses you see there, there would be 12 houses on that, surrounded by those three streets, including this, and this, and this. So, this is the existing house on the tract that we developed. Now, I wanna tell you that an area the same size as that represented partly up here, also represented up here, when it was laid out in 1913, there were 150 lots laid out in this area, where we're gonna end up with 12. Now, almost all of those 2,400 square foot lots were combined into streets. So there aren't 150 houses in an area that big. But I counted the number of houses in this street and the next two, because there used to be two streets, well, they're there, they came from here. So in the tract of the same size, immediately to the north, there are today 77 houses, same size. Just to give you a little background, so the Sandlin family has owned this property for over 80 years. And a few years ago, 1995, they created this lot and this lot. And this is an older lot that was the family home. When the planning board approved the subdivision of the tract to create three lots, one, two, three, the planning board said no further subdivision without definitive plan approval to be sure about two things. One, no detrimental impact on Little Pond in terms of nitrogen, and that's, of course, at the density that's proposed, it might not have been that big a problem anyway, but now it's all sewered, so this area is unaccompanied. And the other criteria to be considered was just adequacy of the ways. Now, Cedar Street is a town street, Maravista, of course, is a town street, doesn't seem to be any question, because they're both paved, of course, no argument about those being adequate. A lot of the discussion, therefore, is about Cypress Street, which is one of the few private roads in Maravista. All of the other streets, everything shown on this plan, are public. But Cypress is still a private road, 13 houses on the north side, nine of them, it turns out, owned by members of one extended family. And it's not paved, and it's not in good condition at all. You've been down there, you've seen it, it's narrow, it's bumpy, and once you get to about here, it's a fairly significant slope down towards the wetlands, and along here, it's all wetlands next to the pond. So, some months ago, we came before you with a preliminary plan, a preliminary plan decision was issued, and the definitive plan, which you have before you, has been changed in a number of ways in response to that decision. For one, we chose not to make any changes, I mean, advance the plan. So the previous plan involved some adjustment of these two lots, which already exist, one of which has a house on it, the other one of which is owned by one of the Sandlins, it's not part of the tract, that's actually owned by five siblings, one of whom lives here, one of whom lives here, and at least one of the others wants to have the house on the property. So we aren't changing these at all. Instead of being a lot, a subdivision involving 10 properties, it's a subdivision of eight lots. And we also make no changes to the status, such as it is of Little Bay Street. That road has never been built, it's a paper street, and it's entirely within jurisdiction of conservation commission, that area, in fact, a good portion of it, all but a little bit of it, in fact, is in wetlands. So that road is never gonna be built, and we previously suggested that it be abandoned as it would be owned by the owners of these lots. But that seemed to be an issue with some neighbors, and we've taken that out of plan. So we've simplified things. We're not doing anything to this, we're not adjusting these lots at all. And concerns previously had to do with the extent of pavement of Cypress Street. It was suggested that we consider paving all the way to 900 feet to the end, which would have the disadvantage of involving work within jurisdiction of conservation commission and accelerating runoff towards Little Pond, which we thought was a bad idea, not necessary to provide adequate access for the proposed lots being created, and frankly, rather expensive to do. But the road that we had proposed came to about here, and we have been able to adjust the lots and pull the road back, so that instead of being 610 feet long all on Cypress Street, it's now only 475 feet from Maravista Avenue. So this is not a very long road. This lot actually has frontage on Maravista Avenue as well as on Cypress Street, so we have one, two, three lots, that's all, three lots with frontage only on Cypress Street, one of which has an existing house on it. So, we made those changes, we have provided drainage calculations, and the referral from the engineering department says that the drainage is adequate. And the reason that's true in part is because by pulling the road back, and I would guess that the next plan probably shows, that here's Maravista Avenue, this is looking in the other direction, going towards Little Pond, since the road is going to stop at this location, it is before the road, the drop off becomes steep, and we have an easier time controlling runoff by doing so. And similarly to, the same as the previous plan, the road, instead of being crowned in the middle, is pitched entirely towards the south with a four-foot swale all along the south side and drainage spaces. Okay. Tom says it's just a swale with the runoff directed to these hedge spaces. Of course, without having to deal with the steeper area, there's much less runoff. And as I said, the engineering department has reviewed this, and their referral says that the drainage is okay. By avoiding this sloped area that was down here, the transition between the paved road and what will remain a gravel road should become less of a problem. On the other side of this subdivision, on Cedar Street, you might recall, I think this was in the plan previously, providing water service for Lot 7 and Lot 8 with connections to Maravista Avenue. And that's what we proposed to do. There is town water all along Cedar Streets, serving the houses that are on the south side, also serving the houses at the end of the street. But we won't draw our water off of that six-inch main, we'll have connections to the main in Maravista Avenue, which meets town standards to do that. What we did not wanna do is install a hydrant. There is a hydrant right in this location at the corner, we're within 500 feet of these lots of that hydrant. And we met with Officer Mel Trot of the Fire Department, he went over the plan with us, and he told us that, given that we're only creating two lots, fronting only on Cedar Street, I don't think he had realized that these houses already existed. He said that the Fire Department would not recommend that the applicant be required to install a hydrant, and his referral to the planning board regarding this plan is no comment, apparently satisfied with it. The road that we're proposing is, on Cypress Street, is proposed to be 18 feet wide. The road that we're proposing on Cypress Street is proposed to be 18 feet wide with a berm on one side of it because it's just, there's no berm on the high side where it slopes from. And in your preliminary plan decision, the decision says that the board is inclined to approve the 18-foot pavement, and we hope you agree that that's a reasonable thing for us to do. Compared to the present road, it's a magnificent improvement, and it certainly is sufficient to serve the number of lots that we're creating. In your preliminary plan decision, you're also asked about street lighting. There is, in fact, a street light at the end of Cypress Street already. It wasn't shown on the plan on the preliminary plan, but there's a street light at that location. But we're not proposing to improve Cypress Street farther than the proposed turnaround in any. I don't know if I've said everything that Tom didn't say, anything? So we'd be happy to entertain your questions.
Yes, Paul.
Mr. Bunker. On Cypress Street, that's going to be paved and sloped toward the south. Do your calculations show intercepting all the flow from Maravista to that surface, so nothing will continue beyond the steep area of Cypress Creek that's not being paved?
Yeah, the calculations started to propose at the beginning of the street of Maravista, the pavement will go up and then back down so that water will not enter from Maravista. And this is, the proposed slope of this road is 0.8%, is flattest town allows. It has a cross pitch of 2%, so it's pitching to the side faster than it is flowing downhill. Little pitch across and run down the edge of the berm. And I did calculate in some of the butters, driveways on the north side, but it is designed to catch everything in there and flow along the south side of the pavement and around the corner into these two basins with, which have, there is a leaching pit in each one of them.
So it will not aggravate the unpaved area continuing to?
Well, not aggravate, it'll improve it. So it's going down at 0.8%. And right in this location, I have this detail, which we refer to in the referral from the engineer, for the only way to protect, you know, edges of pavement always break. And so this is basically burying a curb flush in there. That's right at this location, actually, it'll be a gravel surface, it'll continue at 0.8%, which is actually flatter than the gravel surfaces now. So there should be basically no water running off of the pavement and continuing down now, which is a better condition.
So that's a curb horizontally across the street at the end of pavement?
Yes.
Okay. Buried down.
Set vertically.
Right.
And it's basically, so, I mean, invariably.
Preserve the pavement from breaking away.
Yeah, invariably, the gravel will wash out on the downhill, and this will protect the edge of pavement.
I guess I do have a few questions, I guess. Bob, you had said the recommendation from Mel Trot Fire Department was not recommending the hydrant?
When Tom Bunker and I met with Mel Trot, he said that's what he concluded. He said he would advise the planning board in a referral that it wasn't necessary to get a letter from him to that effect. His referral, in fact, simply says that he's satisfied with the plan, has no comment, so he's not recommending the hydrant. Which is consistent with what he told us.
In my notes, that referral recommending a fire hydrant on Cypress Street came from DPW Water.
Well, that's a different matter. There is a referral from Mr. Rafferty of the water department, which mistakenly says that there's no hydrant or seems to imply, in fact, it says it, that there's no hydrant in Cypress Street. I guess maybe I talked to Mr. Curry about that, maybe he's had a conversation with Mr. Rafferty.
Yes, Brian?
Yeah, I had a conversation with the board department. They missed the hydrant. So there is a hydrant for the proposed.
It turns out the water hydrant is right in that location. We were able to move this turnaround all the way here, and we got it passed, you know, closer to Maravista than the hydrant, but the hydrant ends up being right at the intersection.
But there's a logic.
So their recommendation is moved then at this point because of an oversight?
We usually look for the fire department for those recommendations, and he's okay with it.
No, but.
The water department's referral is inherent. There is a hydrant on Cypress Street. The fire department has referred back to the board no comment on Cedar Street. They wanted a hydrant on Cedar Street. For fire protection purposes, they would have opened on it. The water department's looking at something else.
With regard to lighting, as it exists right now, there's only one post at the end by Maravista. And there hasn't been any, not to say complaints, but urging of immediate community residents of putting potentially lighting on the road.
Well, we received no such suggestions from Attorney Kirk, who at the preliminary plan stage, representing the family across the street, and whom we provided copies of our filings with and asked if there were any suggestions. I think it might be useful to point out that at least the lots that are served, to be served by the, at that turnaround, one of the Sandlin siblings is going to own two of them. I doubt very much that there'll be a sale of either of them in the foreseeable future. There could be a sale of one or two of these, this lot, and then the existing lot, where there is, of course, the light, which is down near the end. You know, I don't, there is a light at the end of the street, and I think that if the people who are actually going to use this turnaround really as a driveway.
I was just curious as to if the applicant had received any sort of feedback from neighbors. So my next question is with regard to the engineering recommendation for the, and I might have, Paul might have asked this already. It says, does the plan show a 10-inch gravel base beneath the surface?
It, what the engineering department referral says is that the 10 inches is as required. Tom's plan only shows eight inches. Tom told me that if 10 inches is what's required, he'd be happy to put, you know, we'll do that, of course.
So that'll be a?
If, in fact, 10 inches is required. If eight inches is all that's required, I think we should just do that.
That was recommended by the engineering department?
Yeah, he said as required. I don't know what the engineering benefits are.
So the questions for now.
Anybody else?
Just a question for Tom. For Tom.
Sure.
Have you observed the current drainage situation on Cypress Street? How does that handle runoff now as it exists?
Well, really, it just runs down. You know, it's flat, and up and down here, and certainly since we did the construction work there, lots of puddles, they'll be even before. It holds the water for some amount of time. Down here, then it just runs down and flattens out at the bottom. There is no real drainage there or drainage structures or anything. It's just puddles and some runoff here and then more runoff and erosion down toward Little Pond.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, could you go over the pitch on the lower section that replaces the pond? I understand your explanation of the upper section's being paved. The last two lots, the runoff, how are you dealing with it on the dirt section? Is there any?
We're not.
We're not, just let it go?
We're not proposing any, toward, you know, from.
From there down, yeah.
You know, paving into here, and then maybe another 20 feet or so that'll be, you know, graded and compacted. And then that, what we're working with here will help the situation lower down because there'll be no or very little water going past this.
So that should stay as it is then, is what you're saying? Or get better, actually?
It will get, the situation will get better.
Because you're not letting the water come down, all the way down?
Water falling on that part itself will go down, you know, but it'll be less water running down ultimately.
I do have one more.
Go ahead.
Bob, this question's for you, I guess. I appreciate the historical background that you gave us. And when I did my site visit to the area, I didn't go into the outlying neighborhoods. But my question is more about the waiver for sidewalks. On the sidewalks that you had, or on the neighborhood's streets that go down to Little Pond, are there sidewalks over there?
I don't think there are sidewalks, other than on Randolph, which is not a dead-end road, of course. That's the one that connects back to town. I don't believe there are sidewalks on any, and I could be wrong, be corrected, but on any of those streets, almost all of which are owned by the town. No sidewalks there.
Okay. That's it?
I could point out, too, that adding sidewalks with major moving more trees is, you know, obvious. But right now, you know, where we have, even doing 18 feet of pavement, we have some trees located along here, and half of them are far enough back to allow a four-foot shoulder. Some of them are a little too close and might have to be taken down, but if we have put in a sidewalk, it all.
Well, the only, the only reason I was trying to establish a parity with the rest of the neighborhood, so if there's no sidewalks in ancillary streets.
Jim?
Yes?
The site visit that we did was quite a while ago, but in regard to the sidewalks and so on, as I recall, the people that we met along there when we did the site visit really wanted to see it remain as natural as possible.
Well, that's what, I was trying to gather that information with regard to the parity of the neighborhood, keeping the character of the neighborhood. So.
Are we all set, board members? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Yes, sir. Please come up and identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Michael McGurty. I'm the property owner of 10 Cypress Street. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I apologize, I'm a public speaker, so if I get a little broken up, forgive me. Cypress Street is personal to us. I want to thank the Cypress Street family for being here this evening. Many of them made great sacrifices, and some are with their children. We have the Wychman family, the D'Amelio, the Omaras, the Gallaghers, the Marstons, the Mackinsons, and a number of McGurtys. What makes Cypress Street unique is my father built most of the houses starting in the '60s. He's no longer with us. But we have great people on that street. We've all grown up, and our kids are growing up. And it is a little different than a normal street. We can't sell our homes. This is something that we have to leave in a trust. You don't come across neighborhoods, we have eight family members owning property on the same street. It can be hectic at times, but it's a part of our life that is extremely important to us. And this street means the world to us, as do our neighbors, whether they have McGurty as a last name or one of the names I've just mentioned. So after the, looking at the preliminary plan, I took a little time, and I took a little trip. And I started from Minot Road, and I went my way all the way up to T-Ticket Highway. And this is what I was able to come across when I did my looking and I measured the roads. There's roughly 71 roads that come off of Maravista, Maravista Avenue extension that run all the way up to T-Ticket Highway. Of those roads, 15 of them are 18-foot wide. Most of them are closer to the ocean side. They get a little larger as they go up, and there's a reason for that. There are 12 roads that are roughly 19 feet wide. They average 7.4 homes on these streets. The 18-foot roads, they average 6.4 homes on the streets. We get up to, 18 of these roads are 20-foot wide, and they average 14.4 homes per street. As we get up to 21 feet, they average 16.7 homes on a street. When we get up to 22 plus in width of roadway, they average 14 homes on a street. And that's because as you get closer to the T-Ticket Elementary School, those are the newer subdivisions, which were mostly done in the '80s, which have a wider road, they have the berm, they have the proper drainage, they have the curb on the road, they have turnarounds that limit the amount of homes that are on those streets. And I'm sure some of those lots are bigger than the ones that we spoke about earlier. In our neighborhood, they're 5 to 7,500 square foot lots. That's just the way they were laid out. I know that it had been mentioned before that an 18-foot wide roadway was acceptable to put on plan, that, for instance, Cedar Street is 18-foot in width. Cedar Street was adopted by this town in 1967, when the average homeowner had one car and one house. The Red Sox were in a pennant race. Kali Yaskrimsky won the Triple Crown that year. 18 feet is obsolete. Just doesn't work. If we go to the NFPA regulations, which is the Holy Grail for fire departments, or the International Fire Code, the minimum roadway width is 20 feet. That does not include sidewalks, berms of grass. It is strictly asphalt. They also refer to the town in its Article 6, 30524, minor roads. They require 22 feet. There's no hardship for a waiver to 18 feet for Cypress Street. It's busy, it's crowded. It's our home, 18 feet. I've said it all along, just does not work. It's not safe, and it doesn't even meet the requirements set forth for this town. It's obviously in your jurisdiction to make those decisions. As far as the surface, all-access road, fire-access roads, the surfaces has to be designed and maintained to support the imposed loads of fire apparatus and shall be provided with all-weather driving surfaces, not dirt, because it's no longer a dirt road. It's a new subdivision that needs to meet those standards. The town subdivision design on Article 6, 30524, streets, dead-end streets, they shall be provided at the closed end with a turnaround, having an outside street radius of at least 60 feet or a T-turnaround, which is 18 feet by 80 feet long. Those are the requirements set forth by the town in its own regulations, supported by the NFPA regulations. I spoke to Officer Trot some months ago prior to the summer after the preliminary. I told him about the 18-foot roadway. He couldn't believe it at the time. I drove here from my home in Braintree. I sat there and I met with him. He said the only recommendation he made on the preliminary plan was to add a fire hydrant to Cedar Street. He brought up the conversation. That's what he told me. We, the homeowners of Cypress Street, have looked at the plan. It's a change. We accept the changes coming in. The developers have a right to develop their land. We're not opposed to that. We had our attorney reach out and let them know that we would. We had our attorney reach out and let them know that we would support a cluster development that would come off of Maravista, which would make sense. It would have better lot configuration, you'd have a better street. Lots would be more expensive. It'd be a nicer design. I've spoken with local engineering companies in this community that, and one gentleman already had done a cluster zone development for that parcel of land. The issue regarding sidewalks, if this project, and it will go forward at some point, this changes the lifestyle on that street. We have a lot of young children. We have seniors that like to do a lot of walking. We would look forward to those sidewalks being incorporated into this plan as required in the subdivision rules and regulations. So we would hope that you would take a closer look at all these items. And I just wanted to let the board know that we were going to ask as a street if a peer review would be something the town would consider on behalf of the residents of Cypress Street. But we did review the town engineer's response, and we fully and 100% support his recommendations. Because everything that he put in his report, we agree with 100%. We would just thank the town for giving me the time to come up here and let you know that we do support the town's fellow's engineering report and his recommendations. We have, on such, such, excuse me, on such a short notice, I was able to reach out to a, another GAF Engineering to take a look at the plan. They got it late, over the weekend, because I didn't receive my notification until Wednesday, excuse me, Saturday, this past Saturday is when I received it. I was fortunate enough to be able to get in touch with these good people, and Mr. Rogers, who is here this evening, has a few points that he would like to make as well. And I hope the board would take a good look at what the town engineer has recommended, because it makes perfect sense, it's fair, it's straightforward, and it does the right thing. And I want to again, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you.
Sir, I have a question. I don't know where you stand on the width of the street. I got it clear that you might like sidewalks, but I heard you talking about where, which...
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
Which position do you want it, what would you like to...
22 feet. We want it, we want it into compliance with the requirements under the subdivision rules and regulations. We'd like it to run the full length of the roadway. The turnaround should be at the, the closed end of a dead-end. As the town engineer has stated, you just can't come onto an already established dead-end road and determine that we're not going to make the dead-end road where we feel it should be. If you even look at their plan, Lot Number One has a bottleneck that connects up to where they want to put this T in, which is in front of 26, 24 Cypress Street. I think it's 3032. That would be it. Yeah, 2426, so anyway. It's really unfair to them to have that put there. And that house goes further down the roadway, where you would have a buildable portion of that Lot One on their plan. So you would be basically approving a house lot that might be 250 feet off an approved road that just ends 430 feet on Cypress Street. So again, we would look for the 22-foot requirement roadway. We would like to see the sidewalks. We'd like to see additional lighting. There are some people on that street, a number of older people. At night, it gets very dark down there. They would like some lighting, and some of them may speak tonight. I'm not sure, it can be a little nerve-wracking, but I'm sure maybe someone else will come up and speak as well. And I've spoken to everyone on that street. We're all on the same page. We strongly feel this way.
We greatly appreciate one person touching on all the points. We don't need 10 people to touch on the same point, but thank you very much.
That's correct.
Yes, Todd?
Just for clarification, are you asking that the road be improved all the way to 900 feet?
Well, not necessarily have to go to 900 feet. It has to go all the way down to the, basically to the end, just like the town engineer. That's in your own regulations.
According to those, that's about 900 feet.
Yeah, well, okay, then, yeah.
So you would like to have it paved, paved all the way to the...
It's not as though the property doesn't abut that side of the whole length of that roadway. And then they can determine where they want to put their drivers.
You're asking it to be paved all the way to the, to the...
That's what we'd like to say.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now it's clear. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, just we wanted, you covered so many things, I just wanted to get out.
Yes, sir, thank you for pointing that out.
Excuse me, anyone else wants to speak, especially have something new? Would you like to have it come up? Anybody with anything new? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Rogers. I'm the gentleman that Mr. McGurty just referenced. I work for GAF Engineering, 266 Main Street in Wareham, Massachusetts. I'm not a registered professional engineer. I've been working in the civil engineering field for 30 years. I'm a former planning board member in the town of Mattapoisett. I'm currently the Conservation Commission Chairman in the town of Mattapoisett. I started this review on Friday, and as Mike said, over the weekend, so I have a list of concerns that I can certainly memorialize and send to the board after this evening's hearing. I'm, I guess, a bit surprised that many of the comments from Engineering Department have, have not been touched upon, but I would say a few things, that there are items missing from the plans that either should be provided, or they should ask for additional waivers. You know, there's, there's monuments that aren't shown on the plan to be set. There's a table of descriptive values of roadway length and lot coverage and so forth that need to be, should be shown on the plan. I'll just focus on a couple of things that are, that are the most important. Because we do agree strongly with the Engineering Department recommendation that the width of the pavement should be, to your standard, 22 feet. But it is a Commonwealth and Mass regulation that the minimum width of a fire lane is 20 feet. And so in my years in the business, I've done many reviews of secondary roads, small subdivisions, where they were allowing 16, 18-foot gravel or paved roads. This certainly, with the number of existing homes and the proposed number of new homes, goes well beyond what you would have considered for a dead-end or a secondary road. So I want to stress that. With all respect to the design engineer, he and the Engineering Department, he's done an adequate job of assessing the drainage to the letter of the town standard, the 25-year storm. But I disagree that the off-site, that the full watershed certainly has not been, has not been analyzed. I just want to, yeah, I should probably follow this up, and certainly will with a letter. But there's two references in your drainage section. So he has not asked for a waiver from 30524F. It clearly requires under Section 3 and Section 8 of that full watershed analysis. So the extent of up gradient runoff from the existing homes on Cypress Street that's going to flow into that system hasn't been analyzed. More surprising than that is that we are all subject to DEP Stormwater Management requirements, and they apply to any subdivision or development greater than four residential units. So we have an eight-lot subdivision with seven new residential units, and so, in our opinion, it's clear that the DEP Stormwater Management requirements need to be addressed and need to be complied with. The downstream receiving water of Little Pond, you know, we need to protect the adjacent downstream properties, even if they're owned by the applicant, because ownership will change, and we need to protect the resource area of Little Pond. Just want to be, I just want to stick to the most important things, because I think I can see this being submitted, and I want to provide time for the other residents. The Planning Board has no authority to waive zoning. And so they've asked for a waiver from the, from the Development Impact Analysis, which is required in the Coast Pond Overlay District. The board has no ability to waive that waiver, so it should certainly be submitted by the applicant. And it's kind of a, it's kind of similar to the drainage. If there's very little potential to negatively impact Little Pond, it will be a very brief, succinct, simple analysis. If there's no issues going on with the storm drainage, they would have no problem supplying the DEP Stormwater Documentation Checklist and so forth. Certainly agree that the area of the cul-de-sac deserves a street light if the lighting is not adequate. I would say that I understand the Town Engineering Department comment with respect to the cul-de-sac, and we agree that it should be moved down just to the area at the end of Lot One, and which lines up with the last existing house on the right. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd like to point out that they have utilized a circular turnaround, the layout of the turnaround is circular, which allows them to have a reduced frontage of 60 feet for the road construction, I'm sorry, for the lots. But they have not provided a circular turnaround, which would allow them to take that benefit to, to put a T-turnout in a circular layout. I don't think provides adequate road construction to allow for that reduced frontage. Excuse me again. So I would, I would ask the board to certainly consider requiring a, if it's going to stay in that location, a circular turnout. Well, those are my major points, sir.
Any additional comments? Anything new?
Sir?
Yes, Paul? Paul, who wants to leave a question for you, sir? Come back, sorry.
I understand you to say you will be going to follow your comments tonight with a letter?
Yes, I have notations that I shared with our client, with the McGurty's. I can absolutely memorialize this and get it submitted later this week, if not tomorrow this week.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, please come forward. Especially if you have something new, okay?
Hi.
Hold the mic and close. There we go.
My name's Marina McGurty. I'm just speaking on behalf of my parents. They couldn't be here tonight. We live on 16 Cypress Street. It's about halfway down the road, a little bit more than halfway. You know, our house and most of the other houses are on a 5,000-square lot, you know, so they're, you know, fairly small, and we only have, we don't have a garage. There's probably maybe two cars that could fit in the driveway. In my house alone, we have five car owners and just my immediate family, never mind if we had, you know, guests or anything like that. So there is an absolute need to have street parking. You know, a, a 22-foot road with, with sidewalks, and it's paved all the way down with the turnaround, would, you know, enable street parking and ensure the safety of all the kids that are on the street. Most of the house on the street have at least two to three, two to three kids. You know, it would also enable emergency vehicles if that was ever necessary. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, back again? You forgot something?
I did, I did forget something. You're allowed to know.
Since you're speaking for so many, we'll let you come up twice.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I did forget one item, and the concern why, why we wanted the road to go where it goes, to the end, where it should be. We've had some tragic losses on that road, and we've lost family members, we've had a house burned down, separate incidences, but very devastating. One of the instances where the, where the emergency vehicles had to come down the street, there wasn't room for them to turn around and get off the street. Emergency vehicles had to back up into the woods in order to go out. That's why when you go down the street, you'll notice the end has been cleared and wider than most of the street. And we've also taken down a portion of fencing on the last house on our side to allow that type of turnaround in case of an emergency ever occurred again. So that's one of our main concerns as well, bringing the road down the way it should be. There's been fires down there. The fire department would have to, obviously, bring their vehicles down that roadway to fight them. There's been brush fires in there. Now you're going to be opening it up to development, and they're going to need that access as well. So there's more to this than just wishing we had a road down the street. We didn't ask for this change. We didn't ask for the road to be changed. If it's going to be done, we want to see it done correctly and done safely to benefit everybody in the community, especially those that have been on Cypress Street for 50, 40, 38, 35, and up to five years. Everyone's been there for quite some time, so it's extremely personal to us, and I hope the board can appreciate that. Thank you again.
Any other comments?
My name is Andrea Mastin, and my family lives at 34 Cypress Street. We've owned this lot for about seven years now, and it's our second home. We summer here, all summer lawn. I have three children. They are able to go down the street and visit their cousin and their great-aunt. When they travel this road, they do, they walk in the middle of the street, they ride their bikes in the middle of the street. You want to pave the street, it needs to be widened. It needs to be safe for my three children. Not only for my three children, but the future that I want for this street. I want my grandchildren on this street. I want the street to be safe for the future of all children on the street. Thank you very much, and thank you for the talk.
I have a question. Bob, you mentioned, Mr. Arment, you mentioned the, all the rest of the streets. What was the date of the original subdivision for Maravista? Is it 1948 or something like that? I don't, I've seen it before, I don't recall what it is.
The original plan, which I described earlier, was laid out in 1913.
1913, okay.
1913.
I, thank you. I knew it was a while ago.
Two hundred lots.
Yeah, that's why, they're teeny lots. Just imagine if they built them all at one time. Anybody else? Well, how's that? Want to come back again?
No, no. One person.
Remember, if it's something new, if it's already been addressed, we, we could keep going all night, so...
Thank you. My name is Doris O'Mara. My husband and I bought the property at 26 Cypress Street 38 years ago. My husband has since passed, but my daughter and I still enjoy coming to Fallon every summer. I'd like to address a few items in the plans. First of all, pictures that were presented by the Samlin Family Trust with regards to the trees and the vegetation. The cuts were done by the construction company that put down the pipes for the new sewer lines. They cut the trees so they could store their heavy equipment when they finished their days where. There is another picture of a hung tree being driven by a young male. This has nothing to do with it, though. The picture of debris is the trees shedding their leaves and branches. This is a natural phenomenon. Trees shed their leaves. I'm quite concerned about the turnaround being moved closer to Maravista. It is now in front of three homes that are owned by three widows of advanced age. The turnaround should be at the end of Cypress Street. I'm sure the fire department would want the turnaround to end at Cypress Street as well, so their fire trucks can enter and exit the street without having to back up. The pavement of the street should be continued to the end of Cypress Street. As you can see, when it rains, the rain runs off the pavements of the dirt road in extremely large puddle forms. No one on Cypress Street wants, all should have to deal with a situation like this. The pavement ends at the end of Cypress Street, and no one would have to deal with this situation. The street should also be widened with a sidewalk, sidewalk, and a burn on the part of the street with, on the development side. After all, the cars will have to be parked, and the safety of small children will be addressed. We do have small children on Cypress Street, which I'm concerned for their safety. I would also like to see more fire hydrants, and with the new development of more houses, I'm concerned that one fire hydrant will now have, will not be sufficient. I am sure the fire department will agree. And I'm also concerned about the new development in the, I'd like to know if EverSource has been notified about this development and added streetlights. Couple of summers ago, two transformers on Cypress Couple of summers ago, two transformers on Cypress Street had power outages because of the old load. So I'm hoping the addition of, I'm saying, the addition of houses with heating, air conditioning, internet and so forth, there will certainly be more outages. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
If anybody else wants to speak, I want to keep on things that have already been said, and only talking about the plan, not about other things on the street. This is the planning board. We deal with the plan that's in front of us. There's other issues that we can't help you with. If we had to heal them all, we'd be here all night. So anything new? Anybody else, anything new? Well, thank you. We heard a lot. Yeah, Bob, yeah? Mr. Ahmet, excuse me?
Simultaneously with our filing of plans, with the planning board, we submitted a copy, a complete copy, to Attorney Kirk. So at least the attorney for the McGurty family had everything we filed some weeks There are 13 homes on the north side.
Quiet, please.
There are 13 homes on the north side of Cypress Street, and we're proposing four new lots, one of which already has a house on it, and one of which also has frontage on Maravista Avenue, as I said. It sounds like it's a very dangerous road with a lot of children and elderly who are impacted by the existing conditions. We're not creating a significant increase with our 40,000-square-foot lots that are proposed. And perhaps there would be benefits of paving all the way down to the water, although there may also be detriments environmentally. But we've had no response to our earlier suggestion directed to Mr. Kirk that there be some sharing of costs with the McGurty family or others related to improving the road far beyond what's necessary to provide access to the proposed new lots. And that is all that the planning board should be reviewing in this particular case. That's what the 1995 decision said. Effective nitrogen on Little Pond and the adequacy of access to the way, to do a coastal pond management study related to this area, to do a watershed study. This is not a big new subdivision. What's all that's big here is the size of the lots compared to all of the other lots in the area. Now, I understand that the residents of Cypress Street would like us not to change the road at all, although that's confusing. Do we not want to change the road at all, or do we want to change the road and pave it and widen it and so on? It's been suggested they'd like a cluster with the access of Maravista, when nothing would be done to improve Cypress Street in that case. Now, our feeling is that the residents of Cypress Street, the current residents, really want to leave things there so that they can use it as they have used it, and hopefully they'll be able to use it, although the Sandland family, which I'm now told purchased this property at the time of the original lots were laid out in 1913. It's been in that family, you know? It's personal to them, too. They have a right to develop their property, and it's been suggested, but they should not be obligated to cure all the problems and build a road that's far in excess of what is needed for access to their property. Now, we've actually prepared and showed to the town planner at a meeting yesterday that we could, and he thought we had seemed fine. So here, we're proposing a T-turnaround within this circular area. And you know, planning board members, that this kind of a T-turnaround in small roads is very typically approved by this planning board. But we could move it even closer to Maravista Avenue and just create a real road with a complete circle right here. It'd be a very short road, and then we don't have to go to the end of Cypress Street to be at the end of the road. We can have a road right here. We would temporarily lose a lot, but we can adjust that. We would end up with the same number of lots. There'd be somewhat more construction, and we wouldn't be, you know, there should be no complaints about the way this is done. It's an efficient way to do what we need to do to access the lots that we're creating. Now, I'd like to give to the board some photographs of the area, of the street, that apparently just show how serious an issue it is about crowding. But it's not a problem that we're going to be creating on our 40,000-square-foot lots, where there will be plenty of room to park off of the street and, but here's photographs showing the condition of the number of cars on a typical summer weekend, according to the people who live out there. There's a serious problem. And the next photo shows all the boats that are stored in the right-of-way, which is not a permitted use of the road. And the photograph showed the...
Does that have to do with any of the other things?
Yeah, I think it has very much to do with whether we need to widen the road and what the uses of the road that's proposed. The photos at the end show the incursions into wetlands. There are also photographs showing the dumping on the Sandland property. The defacing of no dumping signs that are on the trees there. The paths that have been cut into the Sandland property. The cutting of trees in the wetlands at the end of the street.
Okay.
The Sandlands would be happy to make the road 20 feet wide where they need to build it. As proposed now, it's 18 feet wide with a one-foot berm. The requirement in the town, which can be waived and often is, often is by this board, is 20 feet plus one foot berm on each side. Because of the slope entirely across in one direction for drainage, there wouldn't be the berm on one side. We'd have a 20-foot wide road instead of 18, 20 feet of pavement with one one-foot berm. We're perfectly willing to do that. We would have said we were willing to, although I point out that in the preliminary plan decision, the board said it was inclined not to do that. At no time since the preliminary plan decision, other than with regard to the suggestion that we do a cluster, have we been contacted by any of the residents on the north side of the street or their representative and even asked, would we do that? Yes, we'll do that. Should we have to do a sidewalk for this number of lots? That's not the policy of the planning board. Do you need, perhaps, would it be a good idea to have a sidewalk to serve 13 houses on one side of the street plus the new lots? Well, I can understand that, but that's not a requirement that can be applied to the Sandlands under the 1995 decision, which simply says, consider the adequacy of access for the lots that we're creating. Now, there is a mechanism in Massachusetts to create a road district. Any owners of three lots on a street can call a meeting, or actually, you have the town clerk call the meeting, and show proposed road development, road improvements. And then all of the residents on the street, all the owners, are required to contribute to the cost. We didn't want to go that route. We knew that some improvements to Cypress Street would be required and appropriate to be required to satisfy the planning board requirement. We're prepared to do what's reasonable, all at the expense of the Sandland family. But paving to the end of the street and doing what's being suggested to serve, really to serve the current residents much more than to provide for these lots that are proposed, goes beyond what we would be willing to do and beyond what's required for us to. One is not, if you have a long road, whether it's two miles long or 900 feet long, and you want to build a short road off of it, there's no requirement. There is no requirement to have to build the entire road. We've shortened the road to avoid drainage problems. The town engineers have agreed with that. Mr. Bunker is a registered professional engineer. The reviewer from the town is a registered professional engineer, and those are the people you should be relying on.
Do you think there's an opportunity to meet with the neighborhood representatives and come back with a compromise, or do you think this is it?
We're willing to make the road 20 feet wide, and we're not going to extend the road. We're talking about a 475-foot road. That's what's proposed. We're not going to build it 900 feet into Conservation Commission jurisdiction area and have to deal with those issues. There's simply no reason that that's required for this subdivision. We won't do it because it's not, it shouldn't be required. If we did do it, which we won't, it would be done pursuant to the road district statute, and everybody on the street would be required to contribute to the cost. We don't want to do that. I don't think that the residents want us to do that.
Thank you. So has everyone been heard?
If there are no other further comments, Mr. Chairman, then it's up to the board to decide whether you've heard enough information and whether you want to continue or take it under advisement.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm at a place where there's so many apparent or unapparent inconsistencies raised that somebody had suggested from the audience that a peer review be done. However, I would prefer, in lieu of a peer review, just to see if the plan and all the aspects that are given consideration by the board are in compliance. I would feel most comfortable with the continuance and go from there. And Mr. Ahmet said that there's a potential for meeting with the concerned residents, so I think that would be, I mean, communication is always a good thing. So that would be a benefit to further hearing or a continuance, I think. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I agree. I need a continuance.
I would prefer a continuance also, because I think there needs to be further communication since...
And I have an inconsistency with testimony on the engineering report. We heard that they said it was 20 was okay. I read, we recommend the application plans for a 22-foot right roadway. So I'm hearing two different things.
The 22, Mr. Chairman, the 22 includes the berms.
The berm, okay.
And we're happy to put in the berm on one side, but it doesn't make sense to have a berm on the other side. So we're talking about 20 feet of pavement, which is what the engineer tonight has suggested.
So it sounds like the board would like to continue this. That's fine with me if that's right.
Well, we also, there's plenty of time, too.
Ryan, do you have a comment?
A little further guidance, the continuance for information regards...
Well, maybe they can get together with the neighborhood and solve some of these issues. If they don't, we'll just deal with what we have to deal with.
For the purposes of that...
We heard that there was some outreach and nothing came back. Certainly, if they came back with a plan that everyone agreed to, it'd be a lot easier to go forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I might provide, the critical factor, and I came in tonight very concerned with environmental impact, but more critical than that is the safety issue. And one of the aspects of consideration that the planning board during a review has to be access. So if 18 feet is obsolete, there might be some, you know, something there, especially given the recommendation by engineering wanting to go 22. However, I would like reevaluation and input, further input from the fire department, so, or emergency services. And especially if this is representative of what takes place on that road. I mean, it's a lot of congestion for an emergency vehicle.
I have concern about the drainage on the unpaved section of the road myself. I have experience on Cypress Road where, not this end, but the other end, where the houses flood from the runoff.
I had concern about that same thing on our site visit.
Just leaving it the way it is, I'm not sure it's adequate.
All right, so I just want to get a little guidance from the board.
Drainage and safety, the two areas I have concern on.
So I can meet with the design team, meet with the fire folks, and get the information they need. So I guess my recommendation to the board then would be that you would continue the hearing until Tuesday, November the first, 6:30, here in the town hall.
Tuesday, November what?
The first. You need a motion. I can't do that.
I'll make the motion to continue the hearing Tuesday, November first, 6:30, here in the town hall. Sutman's meeting.
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Okay, it's continued.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a potty break, or can I take a break?
Call a recess, because we've got a crowd.
Okay, we're going to call a five-minute recess to give you folks a chance to get out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you, for all your comments in a beneficial manner. Very good.
Plan Residential Development, there's a 20-foot wide strip here because it borders on some other residential lots. In addition to that, we're showing a 50-foot wide strip between this portion of the roadway in this direction over to Timothy Bourne Cartway. All of the lots are meet the requirements under Plan Residential Development, the lot size, lot width, lot frontage. The, um, just some notes I'd like to refer to, you know, like the, they, they're, they're on your plan. They're on the left side of the plan and they're called as subdivision notes. And they highlight some of the important geometric elements of the subdivision, such as the length of paved roadway would be just over 2,000 square feet. The length of improved gravel roadway, which would be here is about 280 feet. There are three basic elements to the subdivision area. There's a total of 26.6 acres that are proposed to be subdivided. They include, they're made up of three things. The roadway itself, which is Timothy Bourne Cartway, the road layout for it, and the new road that we looped through, is about 2.6 acres. The lots themselves that are the proposed residential housing lots, 20 of those equals 9.2 acres. And then the balance of the land would be the open space, which is in this case 14.8 acres. So, expressed as a percentage, the area of open space is 56. You, you require a minimum of 50. So this exceeds the minimum. Again, in this scenario, this is a dead-end road longer than 500 feet. And we've thought, we've given a lot of thought to the second means of egress for emergency vehicles. And we've done some investigation on options for that. And this plan actually shows two different potential means of secondary emergency access. And, and I alluded to one on the grid version, but again, we're proposing as an option, a linkage with the bog road to the west, which would come off of the new road through the, a portion of the open space that has access to the new road. That's one option. The other option would be, again, from the same point, and it would head in a southerly direction through the open space. And in this location, there is an agreement between the applicant and this property owner that there would be a 25-foot easement available to link up with East Falmouth Highway. So if this is utilized as the option, and we, we look for feedback, by the way, as one option. In addition, the applicant has deeded rights that are shown on the plan over a 15-foot wide strip of land here. So this access could, for emergency vehicles, meander off and connect over here. So there are three viable options as that emergency second means of access. The drainage scenario would be similar to what I described on the grid. We continue to, of course, Timothy Bourne would be paved to this point and improved gravel to this point. So this, this whole area would have drainage and that would remain essentially the same and still make use of this drainage easement that I discussed on the, when I had the grid plan up on the screen. And then again, they're scattered throughout, in strategic locations where low points would be drainage easements that would collect runoff into catch basins and recharge it into subsurface drainage structures in accordance with the town subdivision requirements for road drainage. There, there would be a proposal for a water main to town standards. It would be an eight-inch ductal line water main with hydrants as required by, and recommended in accordance with the regulations by the water department and the fire department. There would be a sidewalk that runs along Timothy Bourne, connects up with a sidewalk that would be internal to the, uh, new road. If available, there'd be natural gas and of course electricity and the other utilities that are common. This strip of open space, I, I learned from a meeting with your staff, is, it's about 25,000 square feet. It's smaller than what your requirements for open space sizes are. I think it's one acre. But we still were hoping that, we have two options, to keep it as a 50-foot wide strip, or we could just eliminate it and, and blend it into these lots and we'd still be above the 50, 50% open space requirement. We like the idea of having in a sort of an undeveloped strip so that this would be left as is in the lot developers could develop on their own lot, but that would provide sort of a further like privacy buffer between the backyards. We also showed an area on the plan that's of interest, an acre of the open space we were hoping we could reserve for agricultural use, such as small gardens and things of that nature for the residents and, and anyone else that the homeowners association may want to allow use it for, you know, victory gardens or things, things like that. There's a typical road cross-section. It shows all of the elements that are required, just for informational purposes. As far as the surface and the stability of the emergency access, regardless of which one we ultimately propose when we apply under a definitive, it would be likely a geo-grid-stable material that you've seen on other subdivisions, so that these types of products can be embedded into a, a, an underlying road base. And they provide the stability and then grass can be grown over them and they can support, and you can still see that, they can support fire engines and things of that nature, but they're a softer impact to other more traditional surfaces like crushed stone or something like that. And they would also be less susceptible to open. And given the fact that they hopefully would never be used, but if they were ever, it'd be very, very limited use, it seemed like a good idea for that.
Fine. I have a question for you. Can we, if we have to pick one of these, it looks like the applicant has rights to use one. That, I don't know who owns this other land here that they're, other cranberry bog. They're saying they, that looks like the easiest one to use, but can we approve that as the emergency access if they don't know, have the rights to use that piece of land?
Again, this is a preliminary.
I know, I'm just trying to, this is a question we're gonna have sooner or later.
So at the definitive application phase, hopefully your preliminary decision would say that you would need to bring back whatever easements necessary to affect the emergency access.
Okay, that's, I heard him mention one, I didn't hear the other, I just, it was a question.
It's in your rules and regulations. If you're gonna have that type of a scenario, they need to demonstrate that they can actually do it.
Whatever.
And the same, same with this, we would, when we file to demonstrate we have the cooperation of this property owner, we'd have an, we'd demonstrate that in writing that there's an agreement.
Yes, Paul?
Is there any particular target that you have for open space? You said 56%. Is there a target that you're trying to achieve with this?
Well, we were, we knew that the minimum was 50%. So the way that things worked out to provide what we feel are reasonable-sized lots to support a single-family dwelling, we made the lots have the frontage, not the minimum frontage, but more frontage than minimum in, in shape, so that each lot would be able to have the house, a yard, and still retain trees in between each house, even though they're not open spaces, but still create like, uh, naturalized areas that wouldn't have to be cleared. So we, we sort of sized the lots based on our understanding of how much land is needed for that. And then looked at the remains for land, taking into consideration the fact that you need to provide strips in certain places. And we also took into account the fact that this was a bog system. It, it, the, the plan sort of evolved into this where it ended up, thankfully, with more than 50%, which is your minimum. So that's how we sort of got to that.
Those sound lots are quite small, 14, 16,000 square feet. It's all very small.
You know, a minimum lot is 10. So we try to stay away from 10.
They approved the 40 and we, in the past, we kind of liked the open space more than the bigger lots. This is something we like to encourage.
Well, I understand that. I do like the layout better because taking better advantage of the contours, because there's some very steep contours to the, to the east that you're avoiding by this layout.
Um, over here.
Yeah.
Yes.
And all the residents have access to all that open space, right?
Yes, there'd be, when we file, you'd have your typical covenant and your association, um, rules and regulations. And the association would manage the open space and have rights to use it.
Looks like some of the roadway in the original layout was greater than 10%. So you eliminated that.
Yeah, it would have been, it will be if we were to do the by right plan, this would be a challenge. We'd do, require some significant earthworks to develop a road through this section, so that this avoids that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mark?
Just out of curiosity, because I guess I could look it up, but what, what's the required width of the emergency access for the secondary access for emergency vehicles?
I don't know if there's a written rule, but my experience in working on other projects has been a 16-foot minimum with two-foot shoulders. Now, Brian can correct me if I'm wrong.
And then the second question, and I appreciate the, the education on that subsurface base layer. That's, that's, that's great, as far as I'm concerned. But is town engineering buying off on that as well?
I think they have. I know of one other subdivision in town that was brought to my attention where it was used. I'm gonna, I will look into that and do more research upstream of our filing to get a little bit of more information. And I'll probably chat with the town engineer before I finalize plans, just to get some feedback. But I believe it's been supported by the town engineer.
And then my feedback with regard to that, because I, I do like that idea, but that kind of is a deterrent on the, on the, both the grid and the cluster, access going towards the cranberry bogs there, because you don't know what kind of beast the dirt road is. And if the landowner would allow, you know, mitigation or a mitigative-type plan for the subsurface. So I would, I would definitely support the, the one that you, secondary one, that, that one, yes.
We are in discussions with the property owner, E and D. And we're trying to make a decision on what the best one would be. Part of that decision would of course be any feedback from you both.
So, my, can you comment on some of the recommendations that engineering made? On their referrals?
I have never seen a referral from the engineering department.
Um, let's see, I've got written down with regard to parking and access, plan showing development of roadway all the way to the end of the proposed right-of-way. Um, let's see, dead end, uh, they recommend conforming to regs with a T-turnaround or a cul-de-sac at the end. The need for identifying all roadway radii measurements and ensuring they meet requirements.
Seems like.
I would, I would assume that, that's more on a definitive plan, wouldn't it be?
It seems like similar, uh, it seems like similar comments to other plans, subdivision reviews. It's very similar to the last plan we did, did for this. It sounds like possibly a T-turnaround here instead of where we had it here at one point in our, in that proposal. And all the business about labeling the lots. And of course, when we do the definitive, that's when we.
Right, right. I, I think that's probably
Yeah.
More appropriate to ask those questions then.
I think on your staff, if I just see at definitive.
Yeah, definitive, yeah, says it over, it says it over. How about, when does the board of health weigh in on this? At definitive, they, do they, so we'll hear from them, the recommendation? Anybody else?
Yeah. If someone in the lot next to this, the piece of property there, where it's labeled Lot 7, Hayward and Robert Cook.
Over here?
Uh, yeah. So let's say they want to subdivide that and build houses or whatever back there, and they're, we're gonna require the same type of road. What happens to that gravel road at the end of where it turns off into the cluster in their property?
Here?
Yeah. And are we gonna have pavement, then gravel, and then pavement?
I guess that would probably be up for discussion. I would think that you would, it may be that you may want that developer who relies on this paved road to improve a section that's not paved to his land. We don't need that paved to get to our, what we're doing now is improving it more than it is today for the folks that live down here. By that I mean it's more passable, more stable. I'm hearing some chuckles because I think many folks don't like it the way it is, but we're trying to meet your standards, not what they may like.
Well, we'll hear more about that when you come with the definitive plan, huh?
I drove through that this afternoon. It's quite a nicely area. Some nice houses continuing on up. It's a very, very extensive road, much further than I thought it was when I first looked at the land.
Yeah, it's deceiving until you drive it.
I've walked all the way to Andrew T. Booker and all the way out to Fresh Pond.
Yeah.
Okay, public, anyone? Yes, please, come up and identify yourself.
My name is Mark Bradford. I live in 26 Timothy Bourne Cartway. Looks like a nice development. I'm not opposed to it, but I am questioning the second emergency vehicles exit road. I have concerns and I'll explain why. This area.
Take the microphone.
Can I take the microphone with you? We can't hear you.
And, right, this one, see this road?
Yeah.
This area is all woods right now, green area. There are a couple hundred years old pine trees. Beautiful area. Now, my home is right here. Okay, see this road? It's literally the road is that dirt road wherever that emergency vehicles road is gonna be from here to, probably to you. Well, here is the problem. The dirt bikes are there every weekend right here, okay? We hear them all the time, but I certainly wouldn't want them right behind my home, would you? You would, right? So I'm asking, why can't they use this road instead? Because also it is a very green area. I like the green. I don't like those beautiful trees to be cut off. And also, I don't know who owns this land, so how do you know that they will allow to begin to come to 28 anyway? That's the only concern I have, and I would be very, very much appreciated if.
We've asked, we've asked them to address that the next time.
Yeah, and, and also, I have another, I have another problem. This has been happening. Here is my neighbor, there she is right next to me. I don't know who does it, but we hear gunshot continuously behind. So I am worried, I am worried that.
Not part of our.
Yeah, but let me explain. If that road comes, I am worried that people will be trespassing right behind our homes without any protection. I'm not a gun owner. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, this is why this is, we're having this hearing, we're listening to our concern. If, if this is selected as the option, listening to the arbiter, we would do our best to try to move this as far away as is practical and then, but also to respect, you know, fairness of other arbiter properties. And then, but ultimately it would end up here. We, we have an agreement and we would provide it if we elected to use this as the option to demonstrate that we have rights to connect through. The same would be true of, if this were the option. Regarding the off-road vehicles and things of that nature, that's an enforcement matter. We, we can't control, but I understand there's concern about encouraging more of it. That's why that surface might be one that doesn't at least alert or make it as obvious to dirt bike riders that it's fair game. Also realize that whatever, whatever one we use, there'll be a gate that only the fire department has access to. So you would have to really, and kids do this, they see the gate and they wanna get around the gate. But we can't, we can only control that so much. So that's an enforcement matter. But we understand the concerns and we do our best to.
You'll address that the next time.
I forgot one thing.
Come back up, yes?
I also, I also, I forgot one thing. There is one hazard land there. I'm also worried that if they go dig that road, our houses may land, actually not mine, but his daughter is right behind that hazard land. So I don't think that we should mess up with that area. Have you walked in that area? There's a hazard plant there, like, I mean, it can slide. You know, like, my major was architecture, so I can understand a little bit. I don't recommend it.
So, uh, grade?
So, grade, yeah. Well, they'll address that, figure it out. Okay, well, thank you. You have one more? Wait, sorry.
My name is Bill Walzak. I own the property at 126 Timothy Bourne Cartway, just off the green on the right-hand side. Frankly, the, the area is, is a lovely area for open space. And there's a lot of people who use it for walking around in the woods. And while I would hate to see the, and yet another area of Falmouth decimated by development, I understand that this is private property and can be developed. As a result, I would prefer keeping as much open space as possible so long as that open space is permanent, rather than future development. I wonder about a sewer system that would be available. I know that Falmouth is planning on putting sewer systems around. This is a lot of additional houses that will be in that area. I have a well. If there is no sewer system, I wonder what the impact will be on the aquifer where I get my drinking waterfront. I wonder what happens when in development with wildlife that's in the area. There are some really interesting-looking turtles and other things that crawl through there, whether there's any, would be any effort to try to prevent the destruction of the wildlife in the process of, of developing the property. I also wonder about the impact of all those additional houses and cars on the ability to get out of the street, outside of the emergency street. It's, it's going to be much more crowded getting out of Timothy Bourne Cartway onto Route 28 when these are, if these are built. And, and I look forward to looking at the design as well of the houses that are planned in this. I think it's important that we, you know, be harmonic with the, in harmony with the area itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one more?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thomas Garrity, 796 East Falmouth Highway, build Hattie Cawdew property. My wife and I drove down from Boston tonight to be here to just take a look at this. Worked with Mike before. And the applicant, Mr. Drooly, one of my questions is, on this road, as Mr. Leary pointed out, is it gonna be all paved or the gravel? As I kind of come up to that. And I have children, five children. I'd like to, you know, at some point allow them to have property in beautiful East Falmouth. And we'd probably like in the near future to do something with my home property. However, you know, is that gonna be a public accepted way? So that'll be a town, a street.
You gotta ask us.
A public street, accepted by the town and maintained by the town when the subdivision is.
I think it'll, it'll stay a private way. The town, they have to apply to the selectmen to make it public, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we, we don't answer that question. If, if the neighborhood wants to get together and take it to the selectmen, there's a betterment charge, and that's something we don't do. That's another board's responsibility.
To the applicant, which one of the plans are you more leaning to for this? Because this seems to be to the grid.
Hang on. We, he's already, the way it works is the first plan, they show it just as possible. Okay, that's a just, and that qualifies them to come in for the second one, which is what they're really proposing, the cluster development. This way, they save all that open space. The first one is just to show, yeah, if we wanted to build on the big lots, we could. However, this is what we want to do, save the open space.
That's more of.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, just this.
Great, thank you very much.
That's what cluster, that's, that's the purpose of the cluster, which we feel is good. It's less pavement, it saves much more open space, we cut down fewer trees, it's good all around.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess this, we'll hear from them again?
Is there anything further?
Everyone been heard? Well, thank you very much. Very calm group tonight.
Schedule this for the November 1st for preliminary recommendations, and we'll go through that.
Great, thank you.
Do we have to make a motion for that?
No, we, we just keep going. Very smooth. Okay, we, we're still going on, folks. Hang on, we're still.
But, uh, what do we move, this was preliminary.
Don't let him get me.
What do we move on to on November 1st?
We've got the agenda. Got buried. Okay, buried. There it is. Planning board discussion. Okay, we're, we're still here, we're still meeting here, folks. We're having a planning board discussion here. We're in session.
You want us to leave?
No, you just need to let us talk. Planning board discussion, accessory bylaw, accessory apartment bylaw.
In your agenda package, Mr. Chairman, you have some draft, here we go, some draft language that I put together for you. There has been an issue that was raised by the public in regards to the inclusion of properties that are in the Coastal Pond, O'Grady District as part of the accessory bylaw. Right now, the way the accessory.
Right now, the way the accessory apartment bylaw is written, it's if you are within Coastal Pond Overlake District or within a water resource protection district, you have to be... You have to have at least 10,000 square feet...
Per bedroom.
...lot area per bedroom, or beyond the town sewer, or beyond a denitrification system. It was pointed out that there are some coastal damens that are not mapped, not within the district, but they're subject to the provisions of Coastal Pond Overlake District because they're within 2,000 feet. This is Section 98 of the 240-98. Take a look at that, because I'm not going to ask you to do anything. I just want to bring you up to speed, I don't want this language, why we have this here, and what it does. So, those areas aren't mapped, and there are some. I think Falmouth Denner Harbor, Little Subwaters Marsh, Harriet Brook. Some of the things that are listed in Coastal Pond Overlake District wouldn't be captured by the original language, it's in your accessory bylaw. So, I put this together, Duffy and I, to capture essentially those non-mapped areas. And to capture whether it's a special permit or not, you... Because right now, it's Section 98 of Coastal Pond, but this is referred as to special permit uses within 2,000 feet of those estuaries not yet mapped. They actually changed this about 10 years ago to accommodate the non-mapped areas. So, this language here, did I date this? No, of course not. Well, this is due today.
No. I saw it last week.
Right. You see, whether allowed as a matter of right or special permit, accessory apartments located on lots subject to the provisions of those two districts, all right, would be required to have that 10,000 square feet per bedroom. And that hopefully cures that issue with regards to some of the public concerns out there that certainly Coastal Pond Overlake Districts would be... Accessory apartments would not be subject to that requirement. So, take a look at this language. Take a look at Section 240-98. Take a look at the old version of the bylaw, and you can see those differences there that are fairly subtle, but capture those unmapped areas.
This discussion has brought some thought process on my side, and some of the feedback that I've received from different groups, and I'm wondering if we... Instead of us specifying, you know, a denitrification system, can we just defer to the Board of Health and have them... Because they were talking about, well, some of the D-Nite systems only take it down to, you know, so many points of nitrogen, and they were... So, we're arguing math. What if we just say whatever the Board of Health wants?
The zoning bylaw specifies 12 milligrams per liter.
Right.
That's the goal. DEP, I know, most of them aren't there, they're about 19 milligrams per liter. Just so you know, the planning board requires these systems, but it's the Board of Health that gets into all the weeds, gets into the weeds. Just like when you said there must be town water in subdivision, you didn't get into all the weeds about this or that or anything.
But how about if...
The Board of Health...
How about if we just said, instead of specifying D-Nites to what the Board... A system approved by the Board of Health?
Well, actually, the systems are approved by DEP.
Right.
You'll see that it has either, you know, provisional, general, or...
They're coming up with this idea, though, of some... What did we hear? They talk about protective barrier systems that they're testing that work really well, and they're going to be okay with it? And they're even more efficient than...
Some don't.
I know, but instead of us being the ones that tell them what kind, I would be much happier just to defer to the Board of Health.
Right now, the only thing we should be doing is citing what's in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, I was thinking about changing that.
Zoning bylaw is that Section 98 or 100, that's what you can command, and the Board of Health gets into the weeds about that. Now, if you want to put something into the Coastal Pond Overlake District that says "or equal," you know, these systems "or equal"...
As approved by the Board of Health.
As approved by the Board of Health. That's where you would have to make the change.
That's what I was thinking, because they were actually trying to tell us they didn't like our specifying a denitrification system because there's all different kinds and different levels, and I said, oh, it's not... It's really their job, why don't we just say whatever you want?
Well, the bylaw says 12 milligrams per liter. If you wanted to change that section of the bylaw, that gave you the discretion to say "or equal."
Okay.
Subject to review by the Board of Health for approval, that's probably the better.
Let's talk to the Board of Health and see if there's a language that works, makes it easier. They mentioned they thought we would actually stop some units being built because our language could be too hard to deal with. That's what I... And they actually proposed a slightly less restrictive language, and I thought it was a good idea. Is that what you heard, Pat?
They want to forward that along.
You didn't hear that?
No, what I heard is that by requiring it, what they're finding now is that the alternative and innovative systems, the IA systems, are proving to be way more expensive than they thought it... They were going to be, and that would prevent units from being built.
Okay.
More than likely, what's going to happen, they'll either be on the town sewer, or they're going to have to have 40,000 square feet.
Right.
That's the other alternative.
Right.
You know you're going to get into the denitrification issues because more than likely, right, it's going to be cost prohibitive, and it'd be cheaper to go out, and you'd be more inclined to have a 40,000 square foot lot. Or two bedrooms in the house, or one bedroom on the accessory apartment, to make it work.
And that speaks to the concern that at least the zoning board had with regard to density. I mean, denitrification systems are going to be your mitigative control with regard to that from a cost standpoint, so...
Or the other alternative is, is that you require these areas a large lot.
Right.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking, though, if there's an engineering solution, and they can do it, and it gets approved by the Board of Health, let's let them do it.
And that's typically the path.
Right.
That's what the path in the bylaw is today.
Okay, fine. If that's the bylaw, then we're already there. I was just trying to respond. I must have misheard them wrong.
They were talking about innovative and alternative, and they are doing that in West Falmouth to try to get the nitrogen levels down lower...
Lower.
...than they currently can achieve. And they are finding that it was way more expensive than they thought it would be. They're, I believe, also working on a system where you can convert an already existing septic system to a nitrogen-removing system. I don't know where that is right now.
The bylaw today allows, pretty sure, I don't have it in front of me, it grants those options, pilot, provisional, or general use.
Yep.
So, if you can come in with something really innovative, you know, composting, whatever it might be, that gets to that level, the Board of Health has that...
Still has to prove it.
Has that discretion.
Okay.
It could be pilot, provisional, or general.
So, what I'm asking for is already there. The Board of Health already has to say.
They have that ability today.
Okay. Just leave it alone there.
And this is 12 milligrams per liter is that test. Do they all work to that level of efficiency? I leave for the other experts. My anecdotal evidence out there is that they struggle to make 19.
Okay.
But this... But back to the question, the question is, at least to capture those properties not in map districts. And this language, I think, sort of does the trick. I'd like to fit it out there, have the board look at it critically, get back, because tempus fugit a little bit if we're towards November.
Right after town meeting, we want to publish the draft again and get going on it.
Correct.
In fairness, I'd like to also add, Jim, that there were a number of us that sat in on that water quality management. Yeah, I mean, we just all happened to come into it and listen.
Committee report.
I know. Well, okay. But I wanted to also point out that there was some concern that we shouldn't go below 15,000 square feet, but that would just knock everything out of the picture.
Yeah, that's... They all have their opinions. We studied the math.
Yeah.
And...
I'm sorry to get in on your turf, Paul.
I think we're going to listen to the water quality issues and deal with them through the Board of Health, and that's...
That's the way to do it.
That's the way to do it.
I was saying, take a look at this language here, we'll discuss it again. If you want to put on the agenda for the first, if there have any comments, and then try to incorporate it into a draft.
Let's keep it on the agenda in case something comes up. And then, as soon as town meeting is over, we'll publish it, and then I'd like to do a hearing, a mailing, we'd write all parties, say, this is our almost final draft, we'd like you to get... You all have another shot at it, and we'll get going on that right away. And, okay, and committee reports, I brought up something... I'll get to you, I'm going to jump in first. It's my privilege here. I did an intentional call because I knew you wanted to talk. The EDIC, we came up with a realization that we need to start... The rules are all changing on how net metering is being done in the future. And we have some feedback from Citizens Energy regarding the parcel immediately south of the landfill and its adequacy for solar. And it qualifies, because it abuts the landfill, and it actually has some monitoring sites on it, that it qualifies as a landfill or... Or, what do they call it? Brown...
Brown area.
Oh, brown.
Brown area. So, it would get extra high credits if we were to develop that. But it does have to be rezoned. So, coming after this town meeting... Brian, when do we do rezoning of parcels? Is it only done in the spring, or is it only done the fall? It could be either one.
You could do it at any time meeting, you can...
Okay.
What's it currently?
It's... I believe it's industrial A.
And what would it have to be converted to?
Light industrial C is the only one that allows ground-mounted solar array. So, in order to... It seems to be... There's going to be new rates on both community power and the credits for that, as well as just in general. They're all being done by the state right now, but we need to get our ducks in a row, and so I'll be asking in the future to push that one forward. Okay, Paul? Another committee's...
Nothing to report.
I'm sorry, I did that intentionally.
Well, keep going, EDIC.
I'm finished, that's all I want to talk about.
Well, EDIC does have a groundbreaking ceremony scheduled for Wednesday, the 2nd of November for the Falmouth Station, so that should be...
Mike Glasso sent that out, yeah, that was under his...
But just information for our board. As far as the Water Quality Management Committee, there was a meeting on October 6th, and one of the items on the agenda was the accessory bylaw proposed by the Falmouth Planning Board, and it was well-attended. Several people from the board came, sat in the audience, did not participate in the discussion, but we were very heavily represented. But it was a good discussion, they had some very good ideas, and they're going to send some information that might be incorporated in there, to particularly with the Board of Health level, so...
Any other committees? Oh, precinct meetings, they're coming up. We'll have assignments for those. CP, did you raise your hand? Sorry. I looked, I... So, next meeting, we'll divide up the precincts. Do we have any...
Well, I have it in here only because I believe they're coming up here pretty quickly, you've got a meeting next week, so you may want to just discuss it briefly here tonight. You only have on a warrant, the local planning committee articles, transportation, and... Yeah.
Transportation and historic.
Historic, thank you. So, it may not be a great need to go to a lot of the precinct meetings unless members of local planning committee just want to go to the, say, the ones that they live in just to make sure if there are any questions about them, if there's representation. My sense is, there's some members of the planning board here, if they went to these precinct meetings and had a question about the local planning committee, local comprehensive articles, because they're not participating in those discussions on a regular basis, would have to say something like, well, I don't know, but I'll find out, which is never a good thing. So, it might be the local planning committee goes to these precinct meetings that you think are appropriate. There's only three. Right, so it'd be three each.
That spreads us a little thin.
Well, it might be two because...
Because of the technical nature of the... Of the limited amount of technical nature of the questions.
It goes with the territory, see if we can... I know, for me, well, year and one, two, one and two are the same one.
One, I usually do five and six.
Okay, I could definitely do one and two.
Seven, eight, nine.
And what's missing? Three and four. So, Pat, if you want to do three, and I'll do four, one of the others, we'll each take three.
Let's see.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah.
We'll look at the schedule.
We need tomorrow, so we can look at the schedule and take care of that.
Is there any indication when the warrant will be out?
I believe, like, it goes to print Friday, so I think it's coming out very...
So, we'll have it before the precinct meetings, then, hopefully.
Yes, that's... That would be helpful, yeah. Yes, I know, I'm pretty sure they're going to...
Ideally.
Ideally. In ideal world, you're...
No.
Future agenda items. Oh, general correspondence file is empty, but that was the next on it. Future agenda items? Town warrant, basically. We've got that. Next meeting, November 1st.
That's correct.
And before we adjourn, say something.
Go ahead.
This has nothing to do with planning, but I'd like to publicly thank the Haba Master and the people who called the Haba Master, who called my wife to tell her that a sailboat was sinking in Green Pond, so I was able to get out and bail it off.
She...
It was your sailboat?
It's a nice crew.
It was her sailboat, yeah. Yeah, so, people are watching, and people look after each other in this town, so I appreciate that.
Good. That finishes the agenda?
And I will adjourn.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.